I'd like to welcome you all to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. Tell you how we run the meeting. What we do is we have Lisa, but she isn't here. So Al will be the scribe. And he'll read the application. And the application is for Ryan and somebody.
Stephanie.
Stephanie.
Stephanie Bates. And then after that, you can speak to it as you like. You don't have to. And then we go to public discussion for those who'd be in favor or opposition to the applicant. We cut off public discussion and it goes to the board for discussion. And with that, Al, would you please? And I'm stopping now, and I got my breath. I'm okay.
This is an application for a special permit for a dimensional variation in the chapter 40A, section 9. Name and address of each applicant or petitioner is Ryan and Stephanie A. Bates, 508 West Townsend Road, Lunenburg, Mass. The undersigned hereby appeals as follows: Seeking a special permit for a dimensional variation to add a garage and accessory unit on a parcel that does not meet the setback in lot area requirements. Has the proposed action or use begun? No. The basis for this application for special permit is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 4.2.1.1b and 8.3.2.1. The street address of the sufficient description to adequately identify the land or building, which is the subject of this case, is 508 West Townsend Road, Lunenburg, Mass. Assesses map and parcel 8-20. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, listed as it appears in the deed, is Ryan M. and Stephanie A. Bates. Deed recorded, Worcester North District Registry of Deeds, Book 3790, page 69. Date recorded, 5/10/01. They have no knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in the case. On the questions for the variances of special permits, they answer as follows. Under variances, A, circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally, the zoning district in which it is located. The answer, A, is there is not enough room on the right-hand side of the property to accommodate project. B, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the undersigned for the following reason. Answer, there is only enough space on the right-hand side to place the accessory structure on the residence to keep the appearance of a single-family house. The only place the septic can go due to testing and topography also prohibits the accessory structure from being placed elsewhere. C, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good for the following reason. The answer, it will not be a detriment or impede anyone, public or private, from doing their job. D, the variance desired may be granted without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or purpose of the Lunenburg bylaw. The answer, the variance would not degrade from the intent and/or purpose of the zoning bylaw. The answers to the special permit question, A, will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons. The answer, this shall not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. B, will not have material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. The answer, no, this project shall only improve land and building of the neighborhood. This shall not be an adverse effect on the amenities of the neighborhood. C, will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use. It will, yes, it will be operating and maintained with order and sightliness. D, will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and most clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. The answer, this project shall not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and most clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. This is, in addition to the above, applicant shall comply with all requirements pertaining to the specific special permit requested as listed in the zoning bylaw, 8.3.2.1, 4.2.1.1b, and is signed on the 21st day of October 2013. There's also a butters list attached. There is a, looks like a sewage disposal system drawings attached. And that is it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Would the applicant at this time like to speak to the issue regarding the request? If you do, if you do, you've got to get up, give your name and address, and say what you would like to say.
Can I speak in his favor?
Is it okay if he speaks?
Sure you can.
Whatever.
He hired me several months ago to design and, you know, build this in-law apartment. And the intent and the reason is specifically that his mother-in-law has rheumatoid arthritis. So what we tried to do was design something that would fit the neighborhood and would also prove, you know, effective to her needs. And in doing so, I met with Michael Savigny, the building inspector, and I went over what we wanted to do. And this is basically what I came up with in terms of where we could put it and what we could do based on the fact that it was a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And that's basically it. But what happened in doing so, the only big issue was, of course, the lot size was changed and the distance to the property line in the front of the house. And in doing that, the Board of Health said that the septic system was built on a special permit. So before we came here, we went out, we actually had to hire an engineer to make it acceptable in terms of what they would need for a fourth bedroom in the house. And that's about it.
All right. Name and?
My name's Al Park, yeah. I live in Leomince, Mass.
Okay, well, your address?
102 Toman Ave.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak from the applicant? If not, we'll go to public discussion. Anybody would like to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Give your name and address and say what you'd like. I hear none. If there's anybody in opposition to the request of the applicant, give your name and address. And I hear none. With that, we cut off public discussion. Excuse me. You do, I didn't. Come ahead. I missed your hand raising. I apologize.
Not a problem. My name is Stuart Lyonsen. I live at 494 West Townsend Road. So I was not, I received the notice, and I wasn't, you know, sure exactly. It says here that it was going to be a garage and accessory unit. So I really wasn't sure what accessory unit meant at the time. So now I'm hearing that it's another, it's an apartment, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's not a smart apartment, sir. It's a, it's a.
Yes, it used to be, it used to be an in-law apartment, now it's accessory apartment, not having to be an in-law.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not having seen the plan, not showing if that's going to be significantly closer to my property line, if it's going to be abating my view to the road, if it's going to have impact on my drainage, and a variety of issues similar to that.
Well, you've got questions that you have needing answers to.
Correct.
I guess I would suggest that we turn it over to, we're about ready to turn it over to the board, and the board would answer during the, during the discussions. Your answers probably will be addressed. If you have a further question somewhere along, since we have a small crowd here.
Okay.
If you wanted to ask another question relative to it, I think that the board may entertain that normally we cut off public discussion and then we'll try to fit the information in to your satisfaction.
And just from my knowledge, what is an approved setback?
How do you mean that? It's 40 foot from the front. It's 40 foot is the, is the required setback for normally. That's from the rows we have.
From the rows.
Fronted. Yeah, I think that's a question in front of the board.
You know, it wasn't clear to me.
I think it's a side setback.
Pardon?
I believe it's a side setback that we're.
I thought it was both.
Both?
I could be mistaken.
It's just a front setback.
Front setback?
It's, 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 do you have an enlarged plan?
Yeah, this is a. Because I can't really see this.
Well, yeah, I reviewed it as only the front setback. And there's also the, is there the issue we got in the requirement for?
It's the same thing.
Yeah, that's just a little bit.
Okay, so you can relax and listen in.
Can I give him my copy to at least look at while?
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, sir. Would you like a copy to look at while he's?
Yeah, that's fair.
Right here.
So if there's 55 feet, the right-hand side facing the house in the road.
So that's well within the setbacks.
That's within the setback.
Yeah.
That's 55 from the front corner.
From the front corner, you're 55 feet to the neighbor's property line.
All right, and that's the closest.
To the neighbor's property line.
That's the closest place, yes.
All right, so when you look at the bedroom or whatever it is up in the back on the way by the leaching field, that is the same or further away from?
It's a little, it's a little bit further away.
What's these?
Yeah, what the engineer does is draws the closest.
Forty, forty, yeah.
I would say this is probably, you know, 54.
Well, it should be.
This tips a little bit closer than this point here.
8321, right?
Setbacks, 52.
Oh.
52.
They got under 42.
Setbacks of buildings, yeah, 40 feet.
Okay.
Next to your lines.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sure.
Just for clarification, then, on the front setback, current zoning is 40 feet. If I can read your plan on the small print, it's about 17 points something feet.
That's correct.
Seventeen point eight.
Seventeen point eight feet. So you're really looking for 22 feet?
Correct.
And that's for the garage proportion. If the garage wasn't there, then.
One of the things I tried to.
Pardon?
When I had met with Mike.
You have to hold the mic.
When I had met with Mike to go over the plans, originally, we were going to try and put the garage to the side, but he said then it would, if we put the garage to the side, it would become an apartment, so we couldn't do that. Like, if I put the garage in the middle and then put the house on the end, we could meet all the setback requirements.
That would be two, that would be two dwellings.
Yeah, and then it'd become two dwellings. So that was the only scenario based on the topography, the shape of the lot, and how it could be conformed for it to work for them.
That's how it, that's how it became put in that spot.
Right, that's how it became.
Right.
Any further questions? Anybody?
Well, when I was looking at this, there wasn't a letter from the Board of Health, which I see that we have one that was in front of us.
Would you read that into the record, Al?
I will. Thank you.
That was in front of us as we.
I missed that piece.
Okay, this is to the ZBA from the Lunenburg Board of Health, November 13, 2013, 508 West Townsend. Our agent has reviewed the petition for the above-mentioned property, and we don't have a problem as long as the following conditions are met. The existing sewage disposal system must be replaced. The number of rooms in the house, including the proposed addition, cannot exceed nine, nine rooms. The Board of Health must review and approve the building plans.
Would you like to address the issue presented? If you will, would you get up and speak to it? That's the letter from the Board of Health.
Do you need a copy?
Oh, no, 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 I'm familiar with what he's getting at. Right now, what I did was I drew, I drew the existing house with the, the plans. So this also created another, like, little niche that we'd have to probably do something with. When I originally went down there, the Board of Health was, were the people that told me that I had to, or Ryan had to fix his system, so to speak. The previous owner had a special permit that enabled him to build his septic system three feet above the water table, which in the state of Massachusetts is illegal. How they get to do that, I don't know. So he bought, he purchased this house with supposedly a conforming system, which didn't conform. It doesn't conform, still doesn't. So when I went to the building department to present an application for a permit, they told me to go to the Board of Health. I went to the Board of Health. Jim Garafi said that we had to get an engineered plan showing a four-bedroom system, which is what we did. That's what you have in front of you. So we paid a lot of money to have David Ross Associates drop a set of plans. Today, he called me as he was reviewing them, and he said that there's a law specifically pertaining to nine rooms. So I went online, I had like an hour before I came in to look it over. Basically, it's how you interpret the rooms of the house, and from what I see, we have probably 10 rooms that you would call rooms. There is a way we could rectify that. We could take one of the rooms, they call a bedroom in the house, which is very small, and we could eliminate the closet and the window, and then it would conform to what he is addressing in his letter. And I talked to the homeowner prior to coming here, and he would be willing to do that.
Yeah, you either do that or you make an archway in the doorway.
Well, there's a, there's a square footage requirement as well. Because in his downstairs, basically, there's two rooms. But the way the law interprets it, he has three rooms because of the square footage. His kitchen, living room, and dining room are all one great big giant room. But you can't delineate them. You have to say that it's a kitchen, it's a dining room, it's a living room, because it's over 300 square feet.
Okay.
So the only way we could get around that is to take what they call a bedroom, which is approximately, I think it was like 10 by 12, which is 120 square feet less the closet. If it was 70 square feet, it wouldn't, wouldn't be counted as a room, but it is. So we'd have to get rid of the closet and the window, which is something he'd be willing to do, so.
So you feel you can meet these?
Oh, yeah, 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 we can meet the requirements.
I'm going to ask for the moment, I'm going to, to ask that we set aside this meeting for a moment.
Sure.
Because we have a case that, for Lunenburg Village, that was scheduled for 7:00, and it's been requested that we continue the meeting. So I'm going to take this meeting and put it aside for a moment, take a recess from it.
All right.
And this will only take, should only take a minute, and then we're back on the subject matter. It's regarding the official opening of 7:00 of Lunenburg Village for continuation of the application for.
Excuse me?
Yes. Go ahead. Hello? Go ahead. No. Okay, so it's a request for an application for affordable housing, and at the request of the attorney, Paul Harvey, for the applicant, he requests a continuation to December 11th at 7:00 PM. I want to first of all officially open the meeting as scheduled, so we will consider it open. And then at the request of the attorney, he would like to, for us to continue, to continue the meeting to December 11th, Wednesday at 7:00 PM. Daniel Hill, who is our attorney for the board, and Dick Eaton, who is our consultant, agreed to the request. So I would, the chair would entertain a motion to continue the, this meeting to December 13th, excuse me, December 11th at 7:30 PM.
7:30 or 7?
7:00.
7:00, so moved.
So moved, okay.
Second.
And are those in favor?
Aye.
The reason, by the way, is that the attorney had compelling reasons not to show to represent his, his client. So we've taken care of that, and then it's settled, and we're back on target again, so we reopen this meeting. Okay, go ahead, now we can get down to the nitty-gritty.
May I?
Go ahead.
To the neighbor, which side of the property do you live on? Are you on the?
If you're facing the property, my driveway is off to the right.
To the right.
And then it follows around to the backside.
Okay. So if I'm looking at this, and correct me if I'm wrong, the distance, let me look at the larger plan, from the proposed garage addition to what was, okay, you do have a proposed one-bedroom addition. From the existing home, as it exists today, how much, in other words, in distance to his property line, how much does that change? In other words, if it's 50 feet after addition, where will we be to his property line?
It's 55 feet from the closest corner of the addition to his property.
To his property?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that where the proposed garage is.
Yeah.
And it looks like the, the other addition is about in line with that.
So the side yard requirement under the.
It's just a little bit closer to the house, but.
You can't, you can't sit there, you must get up here and talk.
It's actually, the, the in-law apartment is a little bit further away from his property line. It's probably like 53 feet.
Okay.
I'm sorry, like 58 feet. It's a little bit further away from his property line, where the corner of the garage is 55 feet.
From the record, the requirement for the side yard requirement is 15 feet. Put it in context.
Right.
So you should know that.
Yeah, the other thing that I would want to mention too is, we did go in front of the Conservation Commission, because on the edge of his driveway, a little bit further back, is wetlands. And they gave us a negative three determination on as far as impact goes, which means it's like the best you could get in terms of not, not causing any harm, you know, with the runoff and things like that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to clarify some of his questions. And so the actual driveway to the.
It must be his driveway here.
Right.
It's, the driveway to the garage will remain where it, where it always has been.
Where it always has been.
Yeah.
So that's, there's no.
So you come into this existing driveway, and you basically just, it just curves to the right into the garage.
That's what it looked like. I just wanted to make sure that was the case. So one of the questions he had was that, you know, with the driveway, you know, in his line of sight. So there's no change whatsoever.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a dimensional requirement for the?
For the.
For the land, the land use area?
Yeah, this is, this is residential B, right?
Yeah.
And so that's 80,000, and so this is less than that. So there's two requirements.
We'd probably have to meet that as part of the special permit.
Yeah, it's about 50,000 square feet. Because it's like one and a quarter.
Yeah.
And so when I was looking over everything, it's about what I figured is 50.
Yeah, so it's, it's a smaller lot than is required in residential B.
Right.
It's 80,000 square feet residential B.
Right. I think it is. You're correct.
Huh?
It's 80,000.
Yeah.
And he is in B.
Yeah. So there's.
It's two issues.
Two dimensional variations.
That's correct. You're correct.
In looking at this engineer, septic system plan, it looks like your apartment, the one, proposed one-bedroom addition goes over two blocks or something in the old septic system. Are those going to be removed?
Right, those would, those would be what they call abandoned.
All right.
Yeah, so those would be removed, right.
Will this have a full cellar underneath?
No, that'll be slab-on-grade basement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So what, this must be a big house. You said you had, you're adding one room, and that takes it over the nine, it makes it 10, efficient, you know, where you were looking at.
No, 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 we're not adding one room. We're adding a bedroom, a living room, kitchen, a bathroom, and an office. So what that, so what you have to do is you have to count the amount of rooms, the total amount of rooms.
Okay.
So right now, in his house, we're looking at adding three rooms where the, where the addition is. The garage doesn't count, closets don't count, bathrooms don't count, hallways don't count. But if you take the total number of rooms that he has existing in his house now, we're looking at basically seven, so that brings us up to 10. So the only way we could alter that, what Jim would be looking for, is we'd have to eliminate that, that third bedroom. So having done that, that would bring the number of rooms to nine, because that would be a walk-in closet.
Mm-hmm.
So it doesn't count as a room.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't use it for a bedroom. They don't, actually, don't use it for a bedroom. It's actually a closet, if you go over their house, and they store everything in there.
And part of the reasoning behind this is that the technical requirement.
The technical requirement, what was originally, the amount, adding that fourth bedroom would require them to change that septic system.
Yeah, it's a bedroom issue, not a room issue. Is that correct?
Well, that's, well, we only found out the room issue today. So I was kind of befuddled that the director of the Board of Health wouldn't have addressed that issue when we first went to see him three months ago. You know, we spent almost $7,000.
Why do I think it's a bedroom issue relative to the septic system?
Right, and that's what I would think, that's what I always thought it was, a bedroom issue.
It seems.
So there's only going to be four bedrooms. If I eliminate that other one, they, becomes three. So he actually could have built this with just the dimensional variation and the setback variation.
Yeah, that's.
We would have never had to go in front of the Board of Health.
Their, their letter to us does state, the number of rooms in the house, including the proposed addition, cannot exceed nine rooms.
Yeah, well, see, I'm, I'm not a Board of Health guy, of course, but why did, it's in my mind that it's a bedroom option relative to the septic system, that how many bedrooms you have.
Well, it is, because this is, this system is designed for four bedrooms.
Yeah, so it's a design for four, so we should be able to have four bedrooms.
So you got the four, the one bedroom in the addition plus three in the house.
Three, that's correct.
Total of four, so it's.
I mean, that would be in compliance, right?
Right.
Yeah. If there's an issue that stands out, it would just occur to me that, that if we were to grant, if we were to grant, then we would say.
Because you have to comply with all other boards.
Well, it would be, yeah, in other words, you would have to make it as a contingent that if we, if we were to grant to say, you know, work it out with.
I would just leave the standing condition, because that really covers it.
Yeah, the standard conditions say that, that, yeah, go ahead, but you've got to work out, because we say you must be in compliance with others.
Correct.
So if there is a, a sewage system problem, you've got to work it out with, with those folks. But where does that leave us regarding the number of rooms? Again, it leaves us there?
Well, I'm baffled by that, as he mentioned, because I don't know why he put the number of rooms in here in the house. It doesn't seem to have any bearing on this, on the sewage system.
It's kind, it's kind of vague. Like, I've kind of read through the Title V documents before I came here. Like, I went online real quick just to see, you know, what he was getting at. And there's another thing where you can, if you get the total number of rooms, you divide them by two. So say we had 11 rooms, and we divide it by two, well, 6.5, you would drop it down to six, and then it's like a gallon per day per person usage amount. So I, I'm still not completely sure what it is, but I always thought I just went by the amount of bedrooms.
Yeah, and I seem to sense that's the case.
So that's kind of why, yeah, when, he said we had to change the system, so my first plan of attack was, well, let's, let's go get an engineer and make this system comply so he can proceed with the rest of the stuff. Because without that plot plan, I couldn't come in front of you for the, for the. for the, for the, for a variance, because I needed a registered surveyor who happens to be the same engineer that designed the system.
That's always clear, this isn't a, in my mind, from what I'm hearing, this is not an application for variance. This is an application for a dimensional variation, a special permit for a dimensional variation.
Mm-hmm.
There's a big difference.
Okay.
So this is a special permit that's being requested, as I heard this.
You're correct. Uh, that is, that is exactly. In other words, in your application, you needed not to respond to the, the requirements of a variation.
Right.
I mean, a variance.
It was a little confusing.
You needed not to, because you're not in front of this board for that reason. You're only in front of the board for, for a special permit for dimensional variation.
Okay.
To make it clear.
Right, now, the only reason I filled out all of those things is because the, the, the woman, Lisa, the, the, over at the thing, that's what she had me do.
Yeah, that's no problem, I just.
It's not a problem.
Oh, all right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a problem whatsoever.
It's not an issue.
Oh, okay.
In other words, what, if we grant, what we're granting is, is, is the, uh, is a special permit for dimensional variation. That's what we're doing. Then, within our granting, uh, just for the record, I'll have to read it again if we're assuming we, we, we do that. But, uh, it will say that the, uh, the special authorization is granted, and see if we put conditions on it, with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable state, local, federal boards or agency with jurisdictions over the premises. So, so in, just in our granting, we're saying you gotta comply.
Correct.
It would seem to me that if a clarification of the issue from the Board of Health, depending upon what the current rules and regulations are, which justify or doesn't justify the, the reference to the number of rooms, as opposed to the number of, of bedrooms, bathrooms, uh, bedrooms, if you will. But your system seems to comply with the, with, that's going to be designed as four, a four-bedroom house.
Correct.
How it gets to be a limitation on the number of rooms in that house is not clear to me.
Nor I.
And it's up to the board to talk us through that as to how we'll handle that issue. So I turn it over to, to you folks.
Go ahead, Al.
What's that?
Now, did you have other comments?
Uh, no.
No.
Um, I, I will just, if you don't mind, ask the other, if there are any questions that you have not read the answer to.
Um, you know, I'm just, uh, slightly unclear as far as if it's been addressed, that, uh, the drainage issue, and how adding a large new structure to the property is going to change this drainage, or, you know, the, the property sits fairly low to begin with in, in certain areas. I mean, I do not want to see my driveway, you know, underwater come wintertime and building up, you know, more ice than I already get.
Do you currently have runoff from that property? Is that your concern?
It does pool, and, you know, there's, there's a French drain that runs underneath the driveway, but is that going to quickly become overwhelmed?
Well, again, you know, what strikes me is, is those drainage issues is something that would have been addressed with the, uh, engineering design of that system, I would think.
It should be, yeah.
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 You know, because I don't, I don't think any of the members here have the professional training to determine that, so that's why we depend on the, on the design, septic design for.
I think part of the, the answer might have been what I asked before about, uh, whether it was a slab or a full cellar. If it was a full cellar, would definitely impact what's going on, but being a slab, it's a different question.
Yeah.
And that, yeah, that seems to be, it shouldn't impact it whatsoever.
As far as, you know, absorbing anything, channeling it, would actually be to their benefit to help ease the situation.
Okay.
And I agree that the, the, uh, designer of the system should.
Yeah.
Would address that issue, I would think.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further thoughts on the matter? And I suppose it might be relative to, uh, the conditions that we put out. Is that standard conditions to cover all for meeting the requirements is outlined, uh, in the Board of Health's, uh, letter to us.
Uh, before that, I noticed, um, in looking this over, uh, Stephanie did not sign this. It does call for her signature. Um, the name submitted here on the application.
Yeah, once again, um, Lisa had told me to just have Ryan sign it. Uh, if it would be appropriate, he doesn't live very far from here, his wife is home. He could, he could.
We could make it contingent upon her signing it within the, there's a fourteen-day period.
Correct.
Before it, he comes to the town hall, and we could condition it that she executes her signature.
Sure, that would be, that would be acceptable.
Yeah, within next days.
Right.
So that's a procedural, potentially could be resolved procedurally. Would you agree?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
I'm just wondering, I mean, that this whole thing in the Board of Health letter, it says the existing sewage disposal system must be replaced. Now, that was due to the fact they thought you were adding the additional room, and now you're not by taking that other room away in the house.
Well, you're going to replace the septic, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be one of the conditions you would probably have to place on this. That would have to get done prior to being able to do any construction.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is it, in fact, you're putting a new system in here?
That's correct.
And for a.
That's, that's, that's where this, this whole thing started.
Right.
Yeah, that he had three bedrooms, we were adding a bedroom. The system was built under a special permit, could only accommodate three. So we had to.
Okay, all right.
We had to go and get the right, the right, uh.
Well, they, they just started talking about we're gonna take the room and turn it into a closet, so it doesn't count as a bedroom, and then we're going back and forth.
Yeah, the information today that he, he presented to me at like, one o'clock, was that there's a, a room limitation, and I was like, why didn't you?
Right.
Mention that three months ago when we had a discussion, you know? You said, you know, redesign the system, which we did, and he approved it, and then I got this this afternoon, so.
Right, okay, all right, that, that clarifies it for me, thank you.
Okay. So to, to boil it down, at least in my mind, I think the only two issues before us really is, is the dimensional variation for the minimum-sized lot and the front setback.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay, the chair is prepared to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the application for the dimensional variation for both the lot size and the front setback for this, for the, as requested in the.
Were the conditions, or, from the Board of Health?
They have to comply with all other boards, so we don't have to condition it.
Yeah. So we're, we're saying you have to comply.
Second.
It needs to be investigated. I guess I need an education myself, what it means rooms versus bedrooms versus a system. I'd like to see what the rules and regulations currently are, and I guess you should entertain the same, uh, too, so that we all understand what it is. Hopefully, I don't need to deal with that in the future. Okay, uh.
Second to the motion.
I'll second that, and please make sure your wife does sign that.
Yes, I will.
Uh, by the way, conditional upon the signature of the wife is a footnote.
Okay, with a condition, the wife.
Okay, second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of granting the request of the petition, if please say aye.
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 I'll oppose none, because I said aye, whether you knew it or not. And, uh, there you go. So now I must, uh, read.